I call this meeting into order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, December 9th, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Helman, there were just a couple of items in the table file.
Yes, in this evening's table file, we had two gift agreement agreements, some appointments, increased, decreased, change in assignments, a few leaves of absences, and one resignation.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Move by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for residents, business, and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Yep, okay. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Helman?
Yes, I have one announcement this evening. We're very excited to announce with you this evening that tomorrow, we have what's called the Youth Data Summit. And this is for students from four districts, Waterville, Elysian, Morristown, Tri-City United, Faribault, and Northfield. And this is part of the Achievement and Integration Program. This is a day that we're bringing students from each of those districts together for a special activity. And the purpose is to hear the voices of the students and to generate new ideas about how we might improve addressing the achievement gap. And our Student Data Summit has attracted statewide attention. We know that there'll be some representatives from the Minnesota Department of Education, including the Director of Statewide Testing, Jennifer Dugan, tomorrow there. We had to turn people away. We had representatives from several school districts who heard about this last week and asked if they could come and observe. And we've politely said, "Let us do the first one, and then maybe we'll think about asking you to come later." But we're certainly generating some attention in terms of people really interested in hearing youth voice around how we might be able to address the achievement gap. It will be held tomorrow from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the White Center on the Carleton College Campus. Again, there are 80 youth, 20 from each district, who are going to meet together, get to know each other, examine district data, and then generate ideas on how to close the achievement gap. And we've got some pretty cool, what they're calling "Yeah" swag. And so you see that you've got the fancy little sticker here. We also have the wristband that says, "I got data happy." Now, that is right out of our -- it's the Yeah Data Summit. That one I really like, "I got data happy." That's great. And then, of course, we have the T-shirt that says, "I'm helping close the gap." And the logo was designed by a Northfield High School student, Michael Malika. And so we want to congratulate the students in advance for all of the great work that they're going to do tomorrow. It's important, as students become older, that they really, again, become critical thinkers. And they think about authentic, real-world problems. And we know, we just saw another study that came out today talking about that the Minneapolis-St. Paul Metro area is among the worst in the nation in terms of the achievement gap. And so we know of no one better than to help us than asking our students for their ideas and ways that we can look to address that. So I want to thank Mary Grace Hansen, and Hope Langston, and a number of, Malia Fallon, who've been really, carried, do but really involved in getting this together, and, again, going after elevating student voice. So, well done, and I know I'm supposed to return these items to Mary at the end of the meeting, so I'm not allowed to take them home. Plus, I don't think the T-shirt would quite fit me. I might have to lose a few more pounds, so. That's your announcement for this evening.
Excellent. Anything, any other board members would like to add? Okay. So, we can move on then, thank you, to items for discussion and report. First on the agenda is our Truth in Taxation presentation for the payable 2020 property tax levy, as well as the revised general fund budget. Just as a note, there was a updated slide in the table file for the levy authorization page of the PowerPoint. So Val, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. So we are going to walk through first the final certified levy, so I'll talk a little bit about that. So the levy cycle, just as a reminder, each spring, the county assessor assesses each parcel in the county, and you get a statement with what your proposed property value, taxable market value, will be for the next taxable year. They calculate what's called net tax capacity, so you'll see me reference that a couple of times. Minnesota's property tax calculations are pretty complex. So basically, your taxable market value is divided by your class rate, and it comes up with this net tax capacity. All of this, all of the amounts are set in statute, so they're required to go. The class rates are determined on the type of property it is and those sorts of things. And then, the local tax rate, so all of the taxing jurisdictions, so the school district is considered a taxing jurisdiction, certifies an actual dollar amount. So you'll see a very specific dollar amount in my presentation tonight. That dollar amount is then spread across the net tax capacity. So regardless of whether or not we have billions of dollars of commercial, or $50,000 of commercial, that dollar amount gets spread. So the greater our tax base, the less the burden is shared across. We're in a fairly unique situation here, where we have a pretty heavy residential and a pretty small commercial tax base, so our residents pick up a bigger share than some other communities in the state. So that's, so all of the taxing jurisdictions then certify their amounts to the county. We did that preliminary levy in September. That's really the numbers that generated on the tax statements that were just issued. And this final certified levy is what will go on the final tax statements that get issued next year. The Minnesota Department of Education sets the max levy limit for each school district based on multiple formulas and calculations. It's extremely prescriptive, based on what's voter-approved and what's state-authorized, but they all have very specific formulas that play into them. And so then, this is the process. So one thing that I feel is important to point out is, in the state constitution, it is listed that the legislature is to establish a general and uniform system of public schools. What that results in is that school funding is highly regulated by the state, which we're aware of. They set all of the formulas to determine our revenue. Most of the formulas are based on a per pupil calculation. They set the tax policy and the class rates, like I discussed. Again, that maximum dollar amount, so if you recall, in September, we certified at the max. That's the phrase that they use. And that basically means that we can't exceed that number today unless we had a voter-authorized change, which we do not. So we are not exceeding that number. We could choose to under levy if that was something the district was interested in. They authorize the $724 per pupil for the local optional revenue, and they limit how much you can do for an operator option. So it's extremely prescriptive because they are charged with that responsibility in the constitution. So just a reminder that a lot of these numbers are not, not really under our control. Some of the things that can actually affect your property taxes are voter-approved referendums, changes in enrollment, where your school district taxes are pretty important because of the number of formulas that are driven off that particular count. So if we are increasing in enrollment, typically, our levy is increasing as well. And on the flip side, if we're decreasing enrollment, our, the amount of revenue we're generating is also decreasing. The state can also do levy adjustments for prior years, up to three years, actually. So by the time we certify and put in our estimated pupil units, because we're always doing this, basically, a year ahead of when we're going to actually get the revenue for our budget, everything's an estimate. And then, after everything's finalized, they have three years, basically, to go and say, "You really had 4,100 pupil units instead of 4,000," and they adjust all of those formulas to make sure that they're truing up the revenue that we're actually supposed to get, and that works both positively and negatively. Legislative changes, I will talk about one here in a few minutes that can really make a difference. Here, if you had a change in your market value, that very much drives the amount of taxes you assess based on how your property value changed in relation to the entire tax base. Changes in class rates, so if your property changed from commercial to residential, or things like that, that could have a significant impact. Or if we had properties that changed from a tax-paying property to a tax-exem property, that would also impact the overall. And then, obviously, levies from all of the other taxing jurisdictions, so the city, the county. Those are all the different things that go into what you actually end up seeing on your tax statement. So our specific levy is actually down about, just shy of $40,000, or 0.2%. We're going to call it flat, basically, because as you can see, the preliminary levy and the final certified levy are the exact same. So we're certifying $19,985,995.93, so I was not joking about the specific number. So that is the amount that we will send to Rice County, and then they distribute that. We actually have land in three different counties. Rice County is our home county, so they kind of do all the distribution, but we also have property in Dakota and Goodview Counties. So we collect taxes from three different counties at the end of the day. And the primary reason for the decline in our authority, and I'll talk a little bit more, but we are anticipating a slight decline in enrollment, and like I said, the vast majority of the formulas are driven by pupil unit, and so that really will run the numbers. So this is a comparison, this is the slide that was changed from your original packet that you received. I missed taking out the parentheses of that $205,000. It was not a negative, it was actually positive. So you can see, from pay 19 to pay 20, our levy authority went up about $205,000, but the actual levy certification from 19 to 20 went down $40,000. So you can see in pay 19, between our September and our December, we had a $245,000 increase, and that was due to the bond referendum passing. And so there was some interest in things that got added to our debt service levy, which is what really increased that. And so now, that's all been consistent. So overall, we're going to see a decrease of about $40,000. So as a reminder, a lot of times when we talk about the levy, people assume it's our operating budget, but there are components for three different funds. The bulk of it is for the general fund, about $14 million of the, just shy of $20 million is for the general fund. But 28% is for our debt service fund. And as a reminder, we're required to levy 105% of our debt service payments, and that goes basically into the debt service fund, and then we make our debt payments. That's pretty much all that happens in that fund. And all of those are voter-approved bond obligations, or ones that we have an offsetting revenue decrease in the general fund, like our LTFM bond we did for the Bridgewater Roof. The general fund other is 29%. That's all the state-authorized levies and miscellaneous formulas, so the local optional revenue, operating capital, our LTFM is an aid levy mix, the lease levy, our other post-employment benefit levy, all of those kind of miscellaneous pieces go into that. And you can see our voter-approved referendum at 38% is the largest piece of our levy. The capital projects at 4% is also voter-approved. That is a specific $750,000 capital projects levy, and it's the same dollar. We actually under levy that one every single year, because 750,000 is what we told the community, but it is based on a tax rate, so the dollar amount changes slightly, but we make sure it's 750. And then, Community Services also has a few levies, and that's about 2% of the total. There's a lot of numbers on this page, so I'll walk through them. The first section here is by funds. So the general fund, you can see, is $14 million. It's up about $123,000, or 0.88%. That is due to a couple things. So the enrollment is projected to decline, so the actual operating referendum is showing a decline in revenue, but we added the Achievement and Integration Program this spring. And so, due to the timing of that, that is the program that is 70% funded by the state and 30% levy. But because we had already certified our levy for this fiscal year, the December before, we found out this past spring that we qualified for the program, we're actually levying two years' worth of the levy component of this program. So we're getting two years' worth, which I want to say was $100,000 total. And there were a couple other formulas that increased, but overall, about $123,000. Community Services is up slightly. There's a handful of things that go into that. There's early childhood family ed, and they changed that formula maybe three years ago to tie that to increase when the basic formula increases. So that had never been tied to any kind of increase before, so that one increases as our basic formula increases. So that's the primary driver for that. So they get about $417,000, and that was about a 1.5% increase. And our debt service actually decreased 169,000, or 3%. The primary driver for that, all of our debt is basically the same, the payment schedules are very similar, but because we're required to levy 105% of our debt payments, what happens is that amount builds up in our debt service fund balance over time. And the state goes through a calculation on the levy certification to say, if you've gotten to a certain point, they basically reduce what your tax levy is to take that burden off the taxpayers, because they've already been over-contributing, basically. So that's what's happening there, is we had enough fund balance that they are basically just giving some of it back, because we have enough in our fund balance to cover our upcoming payments, so. That's what the decline is there. And then, the second section is by tax base. So this is the net tax capacity number I talked about at the beginning, and referendum market value. So referendum market value is basically only used for the operating referendum calculation, and net tax capacity is basically all the state authorized ones in a very summary format. So you can see there, they're pretty close, actually, so $10.4 million and $9.5. The switch there is due to lots of different factors, based on the property classifications. And then, that bottom section is voter-approved and other. So these are the three categories that we are required to show taxpayers, the levy broken down into. The state has a specific set of criteria that we're required to show. So the voter-approved and other, this is going to be a big conversation point, I think, for people this year, because it appears that our voter-approved went down 8%, and our other, which would be our state authorized, went up almost 18%. That is really due to a legislative shift. So formula-wise, nothing really changed, but the legislature made a change. The $424 that was the local optional revenue, four years ago, they moved $424 off of the operating referendum and moved it to a state authorized levy to assist districts who struggled to pass a levy, so they could at least get $424 per pupil. At that time, the legislature also authorized a $300 board-approved levy. We were already exceeding both of those amounts, and so it really didn't impact us. They have now moved the $300 into the local optional revenue. So effectively, what happened is they just moved 300 out of our operating referendum into state authorized. The dollar amount that we're getting is exactly the same, it's just in different buckets. So that's a little misleading, in my opinion, but, again, that is a prime example of how legislative changes can impact the numbers. And then, this is just a little bit of history, so you can see kind of year over year where we've been. Outside of having any voter-approved increases, we've really been flat. So minus 0.2, plus 0.2, this is the voter-approved operating referendum increase, and this was the voter-approved bond. And then, this is this year going down 0.2. So overall, fairly consistent across the board. So as part of the Truth in Taxation presentation, we are also required to talk about our budget, and how that plays into the overall context. And we have historically taken the opportunity, since we're already going to talk about the budget, to just revise the general fund budget. The timing actually works out really well, because we've got a whole bunch of things finalized that we did not have finalized in May and June, when I was presenting the adopted budgets. Just going to switch my notes here. This revised budget is quite a bit more detailed than what I usually provide, but there were a lot of moving pieces, and I felt like it was a little easier to follow on paper than just me talking through them. So I will kind of go step by step, but the key things that we know now that we did not know in June, and we are estimating in June, we now have our audited results, which they presented at the last board meeting. October 1 enrollment, as you know, is a key date for enrollment in Minnesota, and so we have that data that the state's going to use. Employment agreements are finalized. All of the staff that we were projecting to hire have now been hired, and we know where they were placed and how much they're making, if they elected benefits, or if they didn't. All of those things play into the budget. I did not include the Achievement and Integration Program in the adopted budget, because we did not have state approval formally yet, so that is in addition to this budget. The lease purchase financing for the shop is also a piece that I'll talk to, I talked a little bit about it with the audit, where the expenditure happened last fiscal year, but the actual financing for it happened this year, so it's just an add for that revenue that we got in that happened in July. We also sold our iPads, and know how much that is, so that was in addition to this budget. And our special ed revenue actually came in quite a bit higher for the audit than I projected, so made some shifts for that, so increases for that, as well as some special ed transportation that I think will be driving some formula changes as well. So I'll talk through all of those, but that's a lot of things. So enrollment is really, like I said, the big driver. This has been an interesting puzzle for me to track for the last two years. So I like including last year, because it's, it was very telling for me. So the adopted budget, we had projected 4,089 adjusted pupil units, and when we weighted, which is what the state formulas calculated on, it was about 4,500. When we got the October 1 enrollment, I scaled that back a little bit, because it looked like we weren't growing as quickly as we had been the prior years. And the enrollment calculations that we use are pretty heavily weighted towards more recent enrollment trends. So we went down to about 4,073, and our actual student was actually less than what I had projected. So that is not the place that I prefer to be in. I would much rather have a conservative estimate. Financially, everything actually worked out well, which we talked about with the audit, but it was less than what I was projecting. So for my adopted budget, you can see, we had originally planned for 4,045, with a weighted of about 4,0460, which is exactly what we ended at last year. So I'm scaling that back a little bit more, because the data that we've seen with the enrollment is that our elementary is slowing pretty significantly or declining, and that our secondary is either stable or very slightly increasing. So the new revised enrollment is showing 4,001.5 adjusted pupil units and 4,415 weighted units. Again, there's a lot of things that play into this calculation. And this, the 39 pre-K, as a reminder, this is a number that throws quite a few people off. We have, if you see the enrollment report, you know we have over 100 students in our early childhood programming. They get counted on that enrollment report, but because they're not attending a full day, they don't get counted as one. So all of those students get counted, and about 39 is what I'm estimating. You can kind of see what, we ended at 41 last year. So that calculation is just a little bit different from what you see on the enrollment report to what actually generates revenue. Excuse me. And that is only our early childhood special ed that generate that. That has the pre-K, hand-in-hand preschool, all of those enrollment numbers are in the Community Services Fund, it does not generate ADM. So the revenue revision, you can see, is pretty significant, and it would always be my goal for it not to be quite this significant, but as you can see, there were a lot of things that went into play there. So the increase is about $1.8 million, and the things that went into that, so the decline in enrollment that I'm projecting resulted in about $160,000 decrease in the state revenues. You can see the state sources went up. There are a lot of things included in that state sources. It is all of our state formulas, so it is not only the basic formula, it's our special ed formula, it's our portion of the Achievement and Integration, it's the aid portion of our LTFM, so there's a lot of things that go into that number. So special education was probably the most significant change. So I've always been fairly conservative with the revenue budget, just because the formula's based on prior year expenditures, and it's a six-page formula that there's maybe two people in the state that understand. So I'd much rather be conservative. It came in almost a million dollars more last year than I had anticipated in the budget, which is very significant. Part of that was a carryover from the prior year. We had got more revenue with some things that got finalized, and part of it was just expenditure-driven, because as you know, we've had some significant increases in our special ed expenditures. The other thing that I'll talk about with our expenditure side is, we have seen a pretty significant increase in our special education transportation expenditures. That is actually reimbursed, fortunately, at about 99 to 100%, depending on how the state prorates that formula. And so that's all going to be additional revenue that's coming in, but again, we're kind of one year behind on the revenue, so I'm anticipating that to increase, so that the revenue for special ed, I increased about $550,000 from my original budget. And that is based on the last comprehensive aid report that the state ran, and last year, that actually came out pretty closely to where we landed, so I think those reports are getting a little more accurate, which is good. The Achievement and Integration, that's overall about a $300,000 program. I'm still learning about this, because it's brand-new, but it is a calcul, the amount that we're authorized for is a calculation based on the number of students we have and the, what's the term I'm looking for? The percentage or concentration of what they consider protected class students, so the students that this program is serving. That, because we're anticipating declining enrollment, the amount that we did our original budget on has actually declined slightly. So I'm not 100% sure how that's all going to shake out. It's not really significant change, but it's, it's an amount that I just wanted to make sure we're not overspending, thinking we're getting a certain amount, and we're not. So the revenue is about $300,000. I do believe, so the levy is complicated, because the levy that we're certifying tonight is revenue for the next fiscal year, and there's two years' worth of the Achievement and Integration revenue. I believe we'll be able to book back the amount that is meant for this. I believe we'll be able to book back the amount that is meant for this year. But I'm not a hundred percent sure about that just because of the way GASP works. And so I don't have the numbers quite lined up yet because I wanted to confirm with our auditors that we'd be able to book it back rather than do kind of a fund balance carryover thing. That's a lot of technical information, so I'm sorry. But I wanted to explain that because it doesn't make sense. The lease purchase financing for the leasing property. So that was a $590,000 expenditure. The financing when everything was said and done was about 600. And so that was added as a one time revenue addition for this fiscal year. The sale of the iPads was about 312,000, again, a one time addition. And then our federal grants, we didn't get extra authorization. So to be clear, the $110,000 increase is really, we've had some carryover funds that we've been building that we're spending down. So we'll have some additional. The revenue for the federal program is basically what your expenditures are. They just match. So because we're anticipating more expenditures, the revenue goes up, if that makes sense. It's not additional dollars, so that's a lot of information. So 56,972,099 is what I'm anticipating at the current time. On the expenditure side, a similar story, an increase of about 1.8 million. So similar increases on both sides. And again, you can see in the narrative, there are a lot of things that are happening. I listed the largest impacts. There are several line items in the budget that got tweaked and changed that were minimal. So I gave you really kind of the large brushstrokes, if that makes sense. So the achievement and integration program, again, like I said, I added 336,000 because that was our original budget that we got approved. I just want to make sure that the timing of the revenue makes sense. This is not a budget that you can have a negative fund balance in. So I think everything will wash out. But I just want to dot my i's and cross my k's on that one. The increased salary budget is really based on an analysis of where we're at today versus where we've been at the last couple of years. And with the addition of some of the staffing that we've included, excuse me. So that was about 397,000. Special ed was about 250,000. Again, there were some board approvals that happened as well as some analysis from the prior year. Benefits, again, the statutory benefits, if I'm increasing the salaries, those automatically increase. FICA is 7.65%. TRA is 7.92% this year. And PRA is seven and a half percent. So those automatically go with any salary increase. We have had a pretty significant increase over the last two years, I would say, in our four through B participation, which is great for our staff. So that was about a $47,000 increase when I looked at kind of where people were actually contributing compared to the budget I had included. And then the retirement HRA for licensed staff, that is an annual amount. We sunset kind of our, in the teacher's agreement, their ability to stay on our health insurance for so many years due to the expense of that. And now we contribute $1,000 to a retirement HRA that's vested after 10 years. So that, because it was a sunset clause, there are more and more teachers that get included in that each year. So that one just kind of increases. But then it's a pay as you go method versus the paying for 10 or 15 years or whatever it is of family health insurance, which is significantly more expensive. So that is just kind of keeping pace with what we've seen as a trend for that. Purchased services is primarily just an increase for the transportation. And again, that was, a large portion of that was the special ed transportation. But there were, in our regular category and one other category that I'm blanking on right off the top of my head, were some minor increases as well based on where we ended the prior year. Supplies, we did increase the capital textbook budget, 36,000. We had some AP biology textbooks, I want to say, that the, we had bought the electronic version and the license expired. And they were needed and just hadn't been on our, on our list for that year. So we added that because obviously we purchased those so they could have the textbook. And then the capital, just to clarify, so the capital line here is not equivalent to the capital budget. I just want to be clear. Capital and equipment is all of our, in UFRS, it's our 500 object code series. A significant portion is actual capital. But there are some, some that are just coded to equipment that don't actually use capital funds, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to differentiate that. But that, we did buy a new driver's ed vehicle, which was 19,000. So I added that. And then community services budget pays us back over four years. We do, uh, um, journalistic to charge their budget and basically reimburse the buildings and grounds budget. We've done that for a couple of years. It's worked well for them. So that's a lot of moving pieces. Like I said, that's a little more detail than I would typically go into. But because there were lots of things swinging different ways, I wanted to kind of document it on paper so you could see it. So this is the summary when you put all of it together. And again, a lot of things happening on this page as well. So the eighteen nineteen audited results are what was presented at the last board meeting. The adaptive budget, I left exactly as I presented. So you can see I was assuming we would start with 17.1 million dollars. But we ended a little bit less than that. So you can see for the revised, I've updated it with the actual. So if those columns are confusing, that's probably why. So last June, we were anticipating ending with about 10.2 million dollars. An unassigned fund balance or 18.3%. I'm now anticipating ending just over 10, so about a $200,000 difference. But you can see it's 17.48. That is primarily because these numbers are $2 million higher. So this is a calculation, this number divided by the 57. So if this number's increasing, it's decreasing that percentage, even if the number stays relatively the same, if that makes sense. Because that's how percentages work. So 17.48 is where I'm currently projecting us to end with our unassigned fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. That is the closest we've been to 16% in my term here. And so we're obviously watching it very closely to make sure that we're confident in where we're going to land and making some really strategic. We're looking at the financial forecast right now, which I'll present at the first meeting in January. And so we're really diving into what are some of the things that we can just tweak internally in the budget without having to actually look at a budget modification process to slow that process a little bit. But overall, I think talking about 17.48% and feeling concerned is a very positive way to be. It, some people would probably laugh at that and say it's 6% when we get worried. This really allows us to be proactive. I think reactive budget cuts aren't good for anybody. Budget cuts are tough no matter what. And if we can be planful and proactive and monitoring the budget, it really just, I think, gives us a better strategy and approach to make sure that we're responsible to our employees and the taxpayers. That is a whole bunch of information. And I will gladly take any questions that you have about any of it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Before I ask board members if there's questions or comments, because this is the truth and taxation public hearing, I'd like to ask first if there's any community members here who wish to address the board either with comments or questions. Any community members here to address the board on truth and taxation? Okay, seeing no one come forward then, I can open up questions or comments for board members. Ellen.
So I had a question on the general fund budget.
Yes.
And I just, more clarifying.
Sure.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the transportation purchase services, that's the special ed transportation, so.
The majority of that was.
Okay. And then in terms of the, then we have special ed increases. So of the 250,000, some portion of that is reimbursable or?
Yep, so that was mostly salary staff increases. So the, the state, I would say reimburses, their goal is between 55 and 60 cents on the dollar. So just slightly over half of that is reimbursable.
And then the increased salary budget, so we know that we had agreements being settled. And then presumably, you know, we hire new staff and we, when you do an estimate, I'm thinking about this, you never know exactly where they'd be coming in in terms of steps in line. So some of it's that sort of piece, is that?
Yep, some of it's staff just coming in higher. As, as we've talked about, this is a destination district for a lot of teachers. So we do usually get fairly qualified staff, which is great. The other, the other component to that is just looking at where our salary budget ended in the audit. And I would say particularly our educational assistant budget. Our, I don't want to call it our buildings and grounds budget because there's a whole bunch of staff, but it's kind of other staff. Both of those budgets were over last year. We had spent more than I anticipated. So I'm kind of catching up the budget also in addition to tying up the staff we've hired and the contract settlement. So it's a few different things going into play there. But we have seen a pretty significant increase with our educational assistant. Last year, I suspect part of the other staff was really probably some overtime for snow removal. So just anticipating that that may be a trend. I'd rather have more budget available for that sort of thing rather than looking over budget every year. Does that make sense?
Yep, that makes a lot of sense. And I was just going to let you know that I really appreciate not only your summary, but the way that you laid some of the tables that you had in the presentation were very helpful.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Excellent questions. Other questions, comments? Amy.
I just had a comment. And that's, whenever you present to us, I'm always so impressed by your competence and your ability to display the information in an understandable fashion, especially with all the numbers going on. And I think you're very clear in your presentation. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great comment. Thanks, Amy. Other questions, comments? Come.
Are you one of the two people in the state who?
Yeah. I really wish I was. It would make me feel so much more comfortable.
And one of them is retiring this spring.
Yep.
So you said that the numbers are averaged, are looked at over a period of three years?
Um, yes, it depends on what I'm looking at. A lot of times I look, so part of that is just our finance software. The, the max range I can run on one report is three years. So if I want more than three years, I have to download it into Excel and merge a bunch of stuff. So that's more information than you need. But typically I look at three years because that's the report access that I have the easiest. The other thing I talked about is enrollment. And that's usually a little more heavily weighted on the more recent years. But we do have, the, the model runs like 17 different calculations. So there are some that are seven year averages and six year averages. But usually the ones that seem to ring a little more true for what we're anticipating are the three to four year.
And, and the state looks at things over three years? And if the enrollment was higher or lower, you said sometimes it'd be positive and negative. So these numbers could potentially change?
Um, no. Yes and no. So the levy, the levy is an unusual thing because of the timing. So this property tax number here will not change because that is what we certified last December. So what we're certifying right now is levy, is revenue for next year's budget. So when I do the budget in the spring, this is my favorite number because I already know what it is. It's not going to change. The, it's, the whole levy is a five year cycle, which seems a little crazy. But because we do everything a year in advance and it takes MDE about a year, nine months to a year, to actually finalize our, we don't get our final student counts until January at the earliest. So they're not even looking at truing up anything until basically two years after our levy, if that makes sense. So that's why it's a five year cycle. So it's, we do it a year in advance, we get the revenue. There's like a year gap where they're kind of waiting for all the final information. And then they have those three years basically to true up everything, if that makes sense. So for the most part, they're consistent about it. But this number here does include both positive and negative adjustments. I can certainly go into more detail in future levy presentations, if that's something you're interested in. It used to swing really significantly, like to the tune of a million and a half or so. And since I've been here, I've been kind of tightening up our enrollment and making sure I understand that because I don't want to come present a million and a half swing in our levy. I'd, I'd rather have it be a little more predictable. So I would say on average, we see 300 to 600,000 now. Depending on, it's usually positive because I'm conservative with our enrollment. But that's, again, it's, it depends on the formula. Is that probably more detail than you're looking for?
No, it's excellent. Thanks.
Yeah, you bet.
Great questions. Other questions, comments? Okay. Val, absolutely. Fabulous presentation, really well, well done. And I, again, I, as Amy and Ellen noted, I really appreciate the narrative because it walks us through all of the numbers. So thank you. And I'm just always so fascinated to see just the swing that any few changes can make and how you have a handle on all of it. So thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Okay, so we will move on now to the Northfield High School update. And here to present that is interim principal, Dr. Laura K. Allen. So welcome, Dr. Allen.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here tonight. The purpose of this mid-year update to the school board is to report about progress towards Northfield High School improvement plan and to share activities and accomplishments and challenges right here at school. What is going well, I have five things listed up here and I'm just going to go right through each of those. One thing, well, many things go well every single day at Northfield High School. But let's talk about Raider Nation, which is four As of academics, activities, athletics, and acceptance. The most important thing that I can tell you tonight is that our day to day classroom operations run smoothly. I've personally been in and out of classrooms in every department throughout the school. And you would be very pleased with the curriculum, the teaching, the student engagement throughout the building. When we talk about Raider Nation, we are not just referring to the triple As, academics, activities, and athletics, that philosophy that most schools boast about. But we also focus on the area of acceptance. Acceptance is the fourth A that our Raider Nation concentrates on. Acceptance of all kinds, of, of all kinds of differences, that is, that we encounter in school and in life. Flex here too. Another thing that's going well, just last week, in an effort to make some corrections and improvements with Flex, we took the opportunity to provide all of our students with a Flex expectations update during a CCR day just last Tuesday. And we addressed five separate areas. First, we reviewed, why did we start a Flex program? You know, what were the goals of Flex? We reviewed the general expectations about Flex in our four largest areas here at school. You know, what do we expect in the cafeteria? You know, what do we expect in the cafeteria, the gym, the auditorium, and right here in the media center? Next, we reminded students how to find out information about Flex by checking the Flex Grid on their iPad, by listening to the announcements, checking school ag messages, and the mini posters right outside of our media center. The fourth thing we did is we told the students about our new Flex offerings such as the Flex Walking Loop, the additional Spike Ball Times, a very popular activity here, an American Sign Language Club, and our newly remodeled H-Wing Flex Room. So again, we told them about some new things here during, during the Flex Hour. And most importantly, we thank the students because they helped make Flex work. Now I'm going to go on to, and this takes our third and our fourth and our fifth, things that are going well. Let's talk about the site improvement goals that were presented to you here in August. The first one has to do with a college-ready theme. This year, a number of Northfield School individuals have been working hard to develop and implement a plan for student choice on the ACT state testing date, and that's on February 25th, 2020. The ACT is not always the best choice for every 11th grader. Families received a postcard, and I gave each of you one of those postcards, that provided them with the information about the test options for this spring. Also, the students have been studying the testing options during CCR. The three tests that the students have to choose from are the ACT, and that's a test that a lot of us remember or know. It contains four multiple-choice tests of English, math, reading, and science. It also has an additional writing component. The ACT measures skills that are acquired in high school that are deemed important for success in college. The Accuplacer is another test, and that's one of their choices. It's used to determine how prepared a student is for introductory credit-earning college courses. And this test is most often used to determine placement in community, or in courses in a community college or a technical college. And the third test is the ASVAB, and that stands for the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. It's used to measure a student's strength for success in military training and is also used for career exploration. Our second site improvement goal that we presented had to do with parent satisfaction. As a staff, we have worked on communication with families and with parents. Administratively, we are sending frequent updates. And in September, November, and December, teachers were asked to send parent emails highlighting a student's success in classrooms, activities, activities, and anywhere here around school. Also in terms of parent satisfaction, this year, Northfield High School changed the structure of our parent-teacher conferences. I believe you heard about this change in August as well. Historically, as we know, conferences existed so that parents could find out about how their students were performing in classes academically and behaviorally, but technology has changed that focus. For years, the staff and parent community have discussed ways to make conferences more relevant. So it was decided that our first and our third quarter conferences would be focused on information gathering and our second and fourth quarter conferences would be more traditional. On September 16th, very early out in the school year, we conducted conferences that gave our teachers an opportunity to learn more about their students from those students' parents. Parents were asked to consider five questions and to be ready to share answers. Those questions were questions like, what should we know about your student? What are your students' strengths? In what learning areas will your student need support? What really interests your students? And are there learning strategies that have been most effective or more effective? And what were they? So the teachers can best meet the students' needs. We had over 300 students represented by parents and the four-hour conference session just flew by. The most powerful communication I received, positive communication I received, was from a parent who thanked us for the new conference model and told me that this was the one and only time that the parent had ever felt comfortable at a set of school conferences. We also found that a similar number of parents came right back for our November conferences and we think that that absolutely opens the line of communications with families and teachers. We're very eager for our third and fourth quarter conferences. Our final school improvement plan, that has to do with passing classes for NHS students and for students identified for intervention by the MTSS, which remember is the multi-tiered system of support. At the end of this quarter, just first week or so in November, 97% of NHS students had earned a passing grade in their classes. 70% of the MTSS students passed all of their classes. Our goal stated that 95% of our students would pass, and so we met that goal. Our second goal said 87% of our MTSS students will earn passing grades. Remember, I just said that that number was actually 70%. So the MTSS team is continuing to look at the data and strategies and we expect to meet the goals by the end of this school year. What problems are we trying to solve? Flex logistics. While I said that Flex is going very well, it is a program that requires intense supervision. Flex is an all-out effort of many. Our administrative team at NHS, the custodians, child nutrition staff are on for a solid hour every day meeting the needs of our students. And our teachers are engaged in the effort each day and in CCR on Tuesdays. So every day, there are things that we can improve upon, we continue to focus on Flex. Rounding. Our administration met and rounded with 51 individuals at NHS. We determined two areas that we can concentrate on for continuous improvement. First, we will work to sustain our current practices in communication, planning, and decision-making moving forward. And secondly, we want to bring an intense or a sense, that is, of transparency to the scheduling process so that staff members have a greater insight into the why behind decision-making. Finally, in EL enrollment, remember, English language, EL is English language, and we continue to look at our EL services at NHS as we have had an increase in our enrollment in that area. This increase has prompted some critical thinking and important conversations. Our EL staffing has increased and we are grateful to you, the board, for your support of this increase. The team of EL teachers are adjusting their course offerings and will continue to assess the needs of their students now and in the future. We've had multiple meetings with the ALC discussing specific EL students and how to best meet their needs. We've had opportunities to work with our district's new diversity and cultural liaison. Our general education teachers would welcome additional training to better address the EL students in their classes, but in the meantime, our teaching staff has shown flexibility and patience as we work to best accommodate the students. Our EL staff is dedicated to their students. And then in summary, every single day when students and staff members walk into our school, they find exciting opportunities for social and academic interactions, exceptional teaching, and cooperative and collaborative learning. There are lasting relationships being formed and strengthened each day. For many students, their school day extends for hours after school while they are doing all kinds of things related to school. And that goes for our, our staff and teachers and coaches and advisors as well. A special thank you to the students at our school for all they do and for representing themselves positively at school and all around Northfield. NHS is a school that works and it works well. It continues to be an honor and a joy to be back here at Northfield High School. Thank you to the students and to the staff and to each of you as the leaders in this great district. And now, if you have any comments or any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Allen. That was a great, great overview of what's happening of late at Northfield High School. So questions, comments for members? I'm sorry, Jeff, Jeff?
Go Raiders! Thanks for, thanks for coming back. I hope you're having some fun and reconnecting some of the old memories you have here and creating some new ones. Just kind of off the, what, what do you kind of notice from, is a positive change or different change from all the years you spent here to what's going on now? Could be any comment?
Well, certainly there are many, many, I would say more opportunities than there were a few years ago. And, and students are, are taking advantage of those opportunities. Also, there's so much support for the academics of all kinds of students in this building and man, I salute the people that, that provide those, those opportunities or those interventions so that students can be successful. And there, there are some similarities. The other day, I was in the orchestra room and it was just like I was back there with Paul Stoughton, and some of you all remember Paul Stoughton, and I was like, wow! There, there are some similarities, but the whole building, of course, is much larger than it was when I was here.
Thank you.
It's a great place.
Great question. Amy?
I have two questions.
Okay.
The first, I think, is really easy. I was under the impression that the ACT was required of all seniors, and I thought it was a state requirement. Was that just a school requirement before? And I think it's great that they're getting the opportunity to take which one, but I just was wondering if you'd speak on?
I think I'm going to refer to my friends since I wasn't here at our school last year.
So the ACT at the state level has had an interesting pathway the last few years. There was one year where it was required and paid for by the state. Then the legislature said, oh, we don't have the money to do that. So they basically offered the opportunity for students who qualify for free introduced lunch to have their tests paid for. And I, I'm not even sure actually, I have to think about it, if this year that still is the case. So there was one year where all students and all juniors in the state were required to take the ACT. The state realized they did not have enough money to continue that and the legislature no longer funded it. We have continued here to pay for students to take, and we get reimbursed for some of them, but we continue to pay for students to take the ACT because we look at it as a very viable way to measure our system as to whether students are college-ready. Over the last couple of years, we've had some additional discussions about is the ACT the only exam that really can share how our students are ready for their post-secondary journey? You see on this postcard here a term that we believe we've coined called Choice Ready. When students leave Northfield High School, our goal is that they have the academic skills to be able to pursue whatever they would like to do that after high school, whether that be a four-year school, a two-year technical college, the military, some other kind of service, or other kind of gap year. And we want them to have the socio-emotional and decision-making skills to have the confidence to make that choice for themselves. We've talked about that there's been some subtle pressure on students, that the only way to be successful after Northfield High School is not just a four-year school, but a highly selective four-year school. We've heard, we've talked about that before. And so from when the ACT was required for all and then it was no longer required for all, we've looked at this three-tier model to have students show what they know in a way that best supports their post-high school plans.
That's great. And then, thank you, Matt.
My second question is about the fourth A, acceptance. I love your four As. And I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit more on that and sort of what, you know, if there's bullying in the high school or what your sense of that is, maybe you can compare it back to the old days? I don't know, but if you could just tell us about acceptance and how that plays out in the high school?
Well, I was delighted when I, I came here, I was, I spent 17 years at a school and, and it's triple A everywhere. And then when I came in here and saw the fourth A, I thought, that's, that's very cool. It's referred to in many, many different organizations and sports and activities at school. And it's sometimes just referred to when we're working one-on-one with, with students. If there's something difficult that has gone on and, and we're chatting with them, we'll talk about, you know, we need to, to have acceptance. We need to think about the differences of others and be respectful of those differences. So it's a teachable moment a lot of times and I can't really pinpoint much more than that, except we use it all the time here and I love that.
Thank you.
Ellen?
So I was curious about the rounding piece. And if you could talk about, you have communications and transparency and scheduling process and knowing that you're going to be doing a transition with principal Lear returning and you transitioning into a different position, and maybe this is more for Dr. Hillman, but I'm guessing the two of you have talked about the transition. And I'm particularly interested in, you know, like you come, you came up with these two areas of focus, so I'm guessing there'll be strategies, but that you'll have to hand them off a little bit or, or maybe you'll be taking them on in different ways?
Exactly. It's, it's very hard to know exactly how we're going to hit that because we do not have four members of our administration team together. But the scheduling process begins very early in a, in a school year. In fact, tomorrow we have a department chair meeting and we're going to review courses and we're going to be doing those kinds of things. And then the minute that the first of the year comes around, it's very fast-moving and we will, we will all sit down and talk about what we learned as we did these meetings in terms of the scheduling piece and that one particular goal. Why do we place classes where we place them? Why do we, why do we offer some classes with a small enrollment and some classes we don't? I mean, these are the very difficult decisions that a school principal makes, but with a lot of input from different people. And I think communicating why we're making the decisions we're making, I think that's really important. And not that we don't do it, but we will continue to do it and do it better. And I don't have all of the, the logistics because I haven't seen Mr. Lear for a little bit, but upon his return, we'll all be sitting down and we'll be working and, and setting up really a good plan.
Other questions, comments? Come.
I know of at least one student who appreciates your coming to class and has noticed he would also appreciate you sticking around longer, but.
That's nice, thank you.
I too like the new model for the, the conferences and one of the comments I heard and I have to share it is the, the conferences where you go to the classrooms, people dislike that the most because one, they get lost and two, they're, they're waiting the longest to, you know, for some, for a teacher when maybe right around the corner, there's an opening for another teacher. And so they, they like it when it's all in one space and they can just pop quickly, especially when it's, you know, it all takes so long. And that's nobody's fault.
No, it's nobody's fault and I know, I understand why they're doing it the way they're doing it and, and that is because sometimes they're delicate conversations and when you're so close, and we have a larger teaching staff, because sometimes when you have part-time teachers, that means for more bodies, more tables and all of those kinds of things. But they do do it every other conference session is my best understanding. And I did hear exactly that, that it was really tough to choreograph one's night because you couldn't see the lines. And I also heard that some of the lines got very long in the back because teachers couldn't see, oh my gosh, there's five or six people. We've talked about how you're probably going to need to walk the family out so you can take a little glance and judge accordingly and plan accordingly. But I do appreciate that feedback because that helps us do our job better.
Other questions, comments?
Well, I, I just, it was a great update and clearly, you know, as interim, you're really continuing to move things forward and really doing some great work. It was really interesting to hear the update on the parent-teacher conference. And, you know, there's just been so many different attempts at, at various ways to, to really engage parents and it sounds like that was a real win. And when you had 300 parents, I think that's significant and even more significant is you've engaged them and they're coming back.
I know.
So I think that's a huge, a huge hurdle that has been achieved because I know principal Lear is here every year saying, we're going to try something new at conferences. So I think it's, it's really excellent. So thank you. And I think what's most exciting for us is to see someone with your wealth of experience and your background and, and all of your knowledge to speak so highly of Northfield High School and to, to be here to make a mark for us on, on what's happening in, in the building is just really significant and we really appreciate it.
Julie.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Yes, Dr. Hillman has a comment.
So when I, when Dr. Allen and I spoke about this possibility last June or so, May or June?
or June, I was very excited for her to consider the position. Her reputation preceded herself. I mean, she has an incredible reputation throughout the state. And I knew Laura K. Allen was good, and I had pretty high expectations coming in, and she has blown those expectations out of the water. The professionalism and the skill of this professional is beyond anything that I have experienced in my career. I just told her the other day, I put her up there with one of my previous superintendents, two of the most professional people I've ever worked with in my career. We gave Principal Lear a unique opportunity to work with his family and go on a single of global semester. An experience that'll be great for him and for him as he comes back. We could not have done it without having Dr. Allen step in. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. A true professional, great sense of urgency, getting things done. So, if you want to really get some steps in, try walking with Dr. Allen, because you're going to get a lot of steps in. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well done, my friend.
Thank you.
As I jokingly like to say, the only thing Dr. Allen has ever failed at is retirement. And we're glad she did.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Well, our next item for report, we welcome Director of Student Activities, Joel Olson, here to provide a recap of the fall 2019 activities and athletics. Welcome, Joel.
Hello. Thank you for letting me come and speak to everybody. I do not have a slideshow like Dr. Allen did, and I apologize for that. But some highlights for the fall season. We had 613 kids participate in our athletics and activities, and that equates to about 48% of the kids, which we would love to have 100%, but anytime we can have close to 50% or more of our kids participating in something is really, really great. Just having them connected to adults in our buildings and having a place where they belong in our valley, that's important to us. You can look at the numbers for each of the sports on top there and the activities on the bottom. Good numbers. Football's down a little bit, but you can see the numbers in the other sports, where we have good, consistent numbers from year to year, and even growing in some of those sports. Some achievements and accomplishments. The girls' swimming and diving team won the section. One AA, they got moved up this year from 1A to 1AA, and they won the section anyway, being in that larger class. The volleyball team won the Big Nine for the third year in a row. And the bowling team, we just found out over the weekend, placed seventh out of 70 teams in the state tournament. So, that was pretty special. And on the next page, you can see the individual participants that were at the state meet for swimming and diving. And our lone representative for cross-country also won a single of this fall on the call Teribarth, DeBarreth. What's especially important with all this success and the numbers of kids we have out is really we hang our hat on some things like academics. The Silver Award, which is a team GPA of 3.5 to 3.74. Girls' tennis won that, or earned that. And the gold winners of the 3.75 to 4.0 football, girls' swim and dive, and volleyball. So, pretty exciting to have those students take care of business on the competitive edge and in the classrooms as well. For those of you that went and saw the Fall Musical, Little Shop of Horrors, I'm sure you're impressed by the talented kids and people that work with those kids. It was unbelievable. You would think you were watching a college performance or even a professional performance with the work those kids did. Then we celebrated three athletes this fall who signed national letters of intent. Drew Woodley is going to go wrestle at Iowa State. Brian Wintempel is going to play volleyball in Northern Colorado. And Ella Kelm is going to dive at Mankato State. So, we're excited for their journey and their next career path. And then, I think I was asked, what was our Dundas Dome time used from last year? And we had about 92 hours of time used. It was approximately 10 to 12 hours in the fall, and then the majority of the time in the spring. And we rent that from, the beginning of seasons like softball will start in the beginning of March, and we try to keep that, as long as the weather's not very good, we try to use it up through the middle of April. So, if the weather's good, we get out of there and get out onto the blue skies. So, that was the Dundas time for last fall, our last spring and fall. Other than that, that's the report from the fall.
Excellent. Questions or comments?
I had, oh, I'm sorry, Tom didn't know. Oh, okay. I had a couple of questions. So, the 92 hours in the dome, that's been, I think that's around where we've always been. Do you anticipate that being, I mean, I know it's so weather-driven, but those amount of hours have seemed to be working well in terms of getting everyone in?
Yeah, really, what, so, the baseball and softball are predominantly the ones that use that the most. And as we get later into the spring, when lacrosse starts, it would be nice to be able to help them have some access. So, we give them a full week each when their season starts at the end of March, so they can do tryouts and things in there. So, we know for that week in March that they're really going to use that. Then it's dependent on, yeah, the weather, spring break comes into play for that. This year, we're being a little more strategic and looking at, especially for softball, scheduling dome hours on game days. Early on, in case there's weather-related issues, we can play a softball game in the dome, so we don't have to reschedule that game. So, and it's such a big and nice facility, we can share that space between different sports and activities that don't necessarily interrupt each other. So, it's been a great, great use for that. We try to make the best use of the time, make sure we're going to use it, and make the best use of the money that's allocated for it. And if we don't have to use it, we get outside and get into the fields and stuff outside.
Excellent. I mean, it's so great that we have that resource, but at the same time, you know, the hours are being judiciously, so I think that's great. And then, my second question is if you would maybe talk briefly about the new coaches workshop that you conducted?
Oh, gosh.
Because that was a really great, thanks to Northfield News, too, who highlighted it. But, yeah, I just thought it would be a great chance to provide an update.
So, part of the purpose of why we play, we just had an AD cohort today, which was a little tenuous getting to, but we got there, and there was a small number. But we share some of the things that we're doing. And one of the things that I've always believed in is that, when you have new coaches, how can we mentor them and guide them in that journey of purpose and education-based athletics? So, hiring them is the first step, and getting the right people is the first step. How do we continue to mentor them is the second. And so, I offered up to our new coaches, and we had four of them, or five of them this fall. And I thought it'd be kind of a dull meeting, with just me talking to them. So, we invited Faro, Oatana, Cannon Falls, Randolph, to bring their assistant, or their head coaches as well. And so, we ended up having about 15 or so people come to that, and some ADs from the other schools came. And we had a presentation on why we play and education-based athletics, and what that means to be a high school coach, and what is your purpose as a coach. And then, we took, and we had three of our veteran coaches, I'll call them, come in and speak to about things that they have learned along the years, and just some of the pitfalls that they ran into, things that they could help new coaches avoid. And so, it became then the second part of that was question and answers and breaking off into groups. And I thought it was valuable and got a lot of good feedback from our coaches and our head coaches that were there as mentors. And it would be great to see where that goes from, continue that mentorship piece with having those veteran coaches maybe partner up with our new coaches, to kind of do a check-in once in a while and help them along answering questions. Because they're more in tune to what's going on with the sport, and being able to help with that coach answer questions that is readily available for them. So, no, it was great. We're going to plan to do it again next year, and we'll invite more people and have more coaches be a part of it. I know we got coaches that do want to be mentors, so that's really neat to think that we have coaches that do want to give back, helping grow. So, yeah, it was really fun to do and had a good experience.
Excellent. Yes, I think that's really great, you know, really setting them up for success out of the gates. So, that's really excellent. So, thank you for...
You did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Question, I think, if you had a magic wand, just to think about this, kind of an open question for facilities or future facilities, of what we have here on campus and kind of, you know, where are we falling short on the needs of, and I know that gym space is always a challenge, and it's a matter of, within our design, and again, comparing ourselves to other districts our size, you know, what have they done to overcome that? And what would be more of a futuristic plan to compensate for the spaces that we need so kids can get home and get their homework done and rest?
We have the philosophy, I'll start with philosophy. Philosophy for me is, it doesn't matter what the facility is, whether you're in a facility with limited space or limited places for kids to go, or if you work or have a facility that has 14 gyms in it and 150 basketball hoops and things like that. It all comes down to the experience the kids have and the people working with those kids. So, first and foremost, we want to get people that are doing right by kids and providing a great experience for them. Facilities come into play when we can't provide the most that we want to. You know, with our practices going until 6 o'clock or 6:30, and then the youth coming after that are going until 8:30 or 9 o'clock. You know, we access every available space that we can with elementary schools and the middle school and the high school. The youth associations do a great job of putting the kids in the right spaces, the younger kids going into the elementary schools, the older kids coming over here to the middle school and the high school. If we could have a magic wand and do a grand plan, just from a facility side, would be to, you know, have a space where we have, a place where the community can be in there as well. So, we'd have a, you know, indoor track, you know, above the gym space, so people can walk and use that during the winter. We'd have enough gym space where we could put all of our levels of, let's say, for basketball, put all the levels in the same time right after school, so they don't have to go early and late. And then, if we look at outside, you know, if we could bring the soccer teams back to campus and have enough fields for the soccer teams. And then, look at the opportunities to, you know, even go into, like, turfing up fields and things like that, so you can have more opportunities for kids to go later into the day or later into the night, or on the weekends, and you're not damaging the grass and things like that. All of that looks, would be a grand plan of a lot of people having a vision of seeing what the, not only the co-curricular experience, but what would be the educational experience for kids. And we want to make sure we're first and foremost thinking about that before putting sports first. We would love to have the opportunity to do so. But we know that we've got, what we've got is great, and we, the folks that are in there are doing well by kids and providing good experiences. So, I love, I love this building. I know there's probably some people that might not agree, but to walk down the halls and to go into the gym, and you got that, you can just feel the history, and I love old buildings. So, I think we're doing, we're doing great with what we got, but I'm sure that there's opportunity someday to maybe have some of those dreams come true, so.
Well, thank you. I've run my share of sprints in that old gym myself, so thanks for your comments.
Amy, Tom?
And just sort of follow up on just on that conversation. You said that 48% students, and you were hoping that more, is part of the reason that some kids can't, because the practices are late at night, because we don't have the facilities?
No, well, no, not necessarily. I think some of ours is our, kids are so involved with so many things, they make choices. And music, especially here with kids in theater and music, they might have done things when they were in middle school, and as they get older and they kind of find their place, they just choose to do different things. We could provide, you know, in the Big Nine, the boys have four levels of basketball. Some of the schools do, and the conferences do have four levels as well. We have three for numbers. I think it's a work in progress with our youth association to provide these experiences for kids that, when I was coaching, I was, I used to coach some middle school, my job was strictly to make it such a good experience that they want to come back next year. And if we can keep those kids out. So, I think there's some decisions and choices that families make. Maybe it's monetary, maybe it's when practices are. When we have some kids try out at the high school level in ninth grade, they don't realize the time commitment, and so they make choices regarding that. Yeah, so, variety of factors come in. But I think for the most part, kids who want to try something, we give those opportunities for them. And there's always, if you walk in the hall, you'll see flyers up for new clubs and things that are being started. Teachers are doing a great job of taking interest of their own and providing those opportunities for kids to join their classrooms or join those things after school. So, there's a lot of things that are really going well with our staff that care about kids and want to see them be connected at school. And that's what we find is when kids are connected and they have caring adults, that they do better, that they're, you know, just from a feeling, a sense of pride and a sense of self-worth is so important with these kids, as they're challenged in a lot of ways in their lives. So, yeah, we keep, when somebody comes to ask about a club or an activity, and we talk it through, and we say, go for it. And we don't try to put any barriers upon them or things like that. But, no, I think we're doing a good job with, when there's a want, we try to provide that.
Excellent. Yes?
You said that football participation was down. Are people, parents more concerned about injuries?
Yep. Concussion, I think, is more and more. We have kids that, football's fun to play, but that's not their primary sport, and so they're saving their bodies for their primary sport, which is understandable. We, this year, this is our second year of using this concussion sensor system, and we had 30 helmets that were outfitted with this system, where John Sand, our trainer and our coaches, can see kids when they get a hit, or what type of hit, or the severity of the hit, and they can check in with that kid right away and say, we see, you know, what was going on? Did you have a position wrong? Did you get in the wrong area? Hit the back of the head, the front head? So, trying to tackle that problem from a preventative, preventative way, and then continually educating parents on the benefits of the sport versus the potential injuries of the sport. But we're seeing, that's where you might see soccer might grow a little bit, football go down a little bit. But, yeah, it's a national issue with football, so.
Thank you for your report.
Yes, sir.
It's clear there's a lot of components that go into a successful program, but thank you for including also the academic boards.
That's important.
Part of the component.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Amy? I also thank you for your report. Last time you were here, we talked about somehow recording all this wonderful data that you're collecting, so it'll be available for future use. And I'm wondering if there's been any steps...
Did we talk about digital, like, digital, like, in the...
Right, I believe you said that we're on cards before and moving it more into a digital...
Yes, yes. We, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow, looking at our registration systems and what we use for registration for our activities. And these systems have a lot of, what would I would say, Cadillac features to them, and we don't use all of those features. And not to say that there's not good parts of them, but the cost-benefit of cost versus what we use out of those programs, in some cases, doesn't work for what we need it for. So, if we can refine and define what is it that we want to have for future, you know, historical data, maybe these programs can help with that. But what we do right now is, we do keep track with, Cheryl has the coaches every season, do a paper copy of all of the records, all of the results, all of the awards and things like that, and we hang on to those and keep those. So, if nothing else, we could scan those into a PDF and hang on... So if nothing else, we could scan those into a PDF and hang on to them from a standpoint in that way. And I'll add one, I know what's going on here, but we have a, Dr. Homan and everybody was gracious enough to let me have a activities website this year. And it's very, it's been very useful and functional for us. And there's a lot of opportunities there to add data and information for folks to refer back to. And we've got our Hall of Fame on there, pictures from this fall and last fall. And as we gather more things, we can put in there and teams have their own web pages that they can keep information up to date for parents and things like that. So that's another opportunity for us to have a digital kind of history of our program. So that'll be, that's a great conversation to have with folks about how do we do that? What's that look like? Is it simply a PDF or is it something we need to be a little more fancy with and a little more, when people want to access it, that they could do that and just pull up things that are by a search or something like that? So yeah, so check out the website. If you got some feedback on that, just let me know. Love to keep getting better with that, too.
Something searchable would be most usable.
Yeah, you're right.
Then a question, mock trial is listed twice. Are there two different mock trials?
Double, double entry. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, excellent. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you back for spring activities.
Winter.
I'm sorry, winter.
Winter, yes. Thank you.
Yes, and good luck this winter with roughly minimal reschedules for canceled games and all that good stuff. All right, thank you, Joel. Okay, so we'll move on. We have here, Sarah Pratt is here, Assistant Director of Special Services, to discuss an increase for a non-licensed special education assistant PCA at Greendale Park Elementary. You're welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. I am here to ask for consideration of an additional 6.75 per day, 6.75 hours per day position of a non-licensed educational assistant, special education PCA at Greendale Park Elementary to meet additional student needs as they've arisen throughout this school year.
And the information was included in your packet.
Oh, yeah.
Sarah, would you just talk about the process that you and Cheryl did looking across the entire system to ensure that all the existing PCA's were being used as close to their allocated hours as possible?
Yes, absolutely. And we worked pretty closely with Val to review times clocking in, times clocking out to make sure all of the hours are consistent with the hours assigned. The process that we follow when we get requests from staff and we have increased student needs is pretty extensive. We take a look at each individual building. We take a look at their staffing allocations, their staffing schedules, including licensed and non-licensed. We take a look at each individual student's IEP and we review services on that IEP, the amount of services required, compare that to the student's schedule and the staff's schedule to make sure that we are in compliance with meeting all of those needs. And we take a look at if there are any overlaps, if we are being the most efficient and effective with the staffing that we have possible and still keeping in mind compliance with special education due process and with keeping students and staff safe. We look how we can reallocate shift support, shift services, make sure we're not duplicating services by having maybe two adults in one classroom for a couple of kids. Is that a way we can take a look and say, "Hey, you know, these two students, we review their data, we say they've been doing well, they haven't required extensive adult intervention, we're going to reduce the number of adults in that classroom by one, we're going to reallocate that adult to this student over here." So we take a look at that across buildings and then we determine if we have unmet student needs and then come here to request the additional staffing. We also work with Val, sorry, we also work with Val to see if there are any unallocated hours or FTE in the district that we would be able to utilize prior to requesting additional.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments? Rob?
Because I'm always interested in the maintenance of effort thing. I see this as, as determined by the IEP until the end of the year. So is this a position just for this year that we would only be approving for this, the rest of the school year?
Yep. Traditionally and typically, if we hire based on unanticipated or unknown student needs partway through the year, we end that position at the end of the year and re-establish a need when we do our student projections and staff projections in the spring.
Thank you.
Other questions? Amy?
I'm just wondering how urgent the need is. Is it immediate? Is it soon? Is it down the line?
It's existing already and it's a pretty significant safety need and so it's fairly urgent.
Other questions, comments?
Sarah, we know, of course, well-known, I think, and often not highlighted is really the shortage of special education, you know, not only teachers, but possibly support as well. Do you anticipate having an issue with hiring someone for this position?
You know, this year, I would say we have had excellent pools of staff and of candidates for opportunities that we've had throughout the year. And we always want to make sure we're finding a good quality fit and a good quality candidate. And I feel we have had great luck this year. I was just looking at a couple of candidate pools for existing positions that we'll be interviewing for in the near future and feel pretty confident that we have a decent pool of candidates at this time.
Excellent. Thank you. Any final, yes, Amy?
If, since this is an urgent need, I would like to suggest that instead of, since we only have one meeting this month, if we can actually move this, the vote on this position up to today so they can use it.
Sure, so you don't have to wait until January.
Sure. So if we can have a motion then to move this to an item for individual action?
So move.
Is there a second? Second by time? Any questions, comments on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move that to an item for individual action.
Thank you.
Well, and you and I just spoke briefly before, before the meeting. You know, typically Cheryl Hall is here, but it's just wonderful that you were here as the Assistant Director. We don't get to often interface with you, but I know what an excellent job you do to not only support Cheryl, but all of our students and their families. And so it's just a great opportunity to say thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks, I'm lucky to be here.
Okay, thank you. So we will move that then to, I'll keep that there so we know what we're moving in terms of dollars. So our last item then for discussion is the Policy Committee recommendations. Dr. Homan, we're looking at a number of different policies. Again, this is first reading, so we would take action on these at our next board meeting. So a good opportunity now for Dr. Homan as he presents the overview and then us to ask specific questions about some of the policy in case, or in some cases additions and in some cases new policies. Dr. Homan?
Yes, and so in the first reading items this evening, most of the policy changes here are recommended by the Minnesota School Boards Association based upon legislative changes in the 2019 session. So if you remember, we asked you to adopt that approach where if it was simply just a reference change, the administration could do that without your approval. However, there's also a whole slew of policies, frankly, that when the legislator, when the legislature made changes to laws, that those needed to be incorporated into the policy. So most of the policies that you're reading here are directly a result of legislative changes that the School Boards Association is recommending for change in policy. There are a couple of items I do want to point out that are exceptions, one of which would be in terms of policy number, scrolling to it here, 534. So this is not a new procedure, but we're shifting the unpaid meal charges from procedure, or from procedure into policy. So we know that we, for many, many years, have had what I consider to be a very humane approach to unpaid meal charges. We do not have a history of, you know, taking student meals or things like that if they are behind in their payments. But we know that with some high-profile cases across the nation, that our, our procedures were within the Child Nutrition Department handbook, it's not really a handbook, on their website for lack of a better term. We felt it was important to move into policy, so we routinely get questions on this, actually. And so being able to point to a specific policy, this is not new. This is basically taking what we had in procedure and putting it into policy. We have been asked for our procedures by several advocacy networks and our procedures have always been highlighted as a way to handle unpaid meal charges in a way that does not impact the student, yet make sure that it holds the payer accountable. Another part that you will see here, which is new, is a service animal in schools policy. This is a relatively new phenomenon in terms of where students may, we don't have any students who formally have a service animal in school. There's a very specific definition of what a service animal is. This is different than, say, we do have some dogs that do come in for students to interact with and to be able to de-stress and things like, this is a different approach. We had actually looked at a number of school districts who already had policies. The School Boards Association until about a month ago did not have a model policy around service animals. We spent one of our policy committee meetings creating partially our own. And then the School Boards Association came out with a model policy. So we always choose to use the model policy from MSBA when we can because of the fact that we know that their legal team has looked at it and then we don't have to pay our legal team to look at it. So those are just a few of the highlights of the items that are coming forward. So thank you for our policy committee. I see, of course, that we have Noel and Ellen and Rob who are part of that policy committee, Jack Rizzo who is, and Simon McDonald that are the student representatives, they are here tonight. They have had the joyful opportunity to be able to go through these policy revisions. And it is, it is the governance of the school district, right? So it is important. Sometimes it can get a little dry until you need it. So first reading, and I just want to thank our policy committee. We have some tough sledding ahead. We have a lot of policies to read because there were a number of legislative changes this year and in addition to our four-year cycle.
Excellent. Questions, comments?
Okay. Well, mine's just a comment in which is, thank you for putting in the part of the policy that says it's the parent's responsibility to monitor the iPad use because I remember when my daughter was going through school, it was like, "This is my iPad, you can't do anything with it." But it's official now if it's in the policy.
Thank you.
Tom?
Funny you should say that because I'm just the opposite. Take on that, but. Actually, I have a couple point things.
Sure.
First, in my packet at least, there's a 524.2 that looks like it's pages one and four.
Yeah.
And then there's another one that had.
Yeah, yeah, that was just.
A mistake.
Yeah, yeah, we caught that.
Okay. And again, in 524.2 and section three.
All right, hang on, let's get there. 520, okay, section three.
Using technology.
Yeah.
If a student uses their own resources outside of the school for activity provided, prohibited with school resources, is there ever a time when the school can access the student's private resources or be involved with outside activity? So if.
So I'm going to say it depends because one of the things that we would look at is there a nexus, you know, to the school situation, is there a nexus to school? The second part is the case law in this area is evolving as we speak. It is a, it is a piece where the key thing would be that, under my current understanding based on this evolving case law, is that there would need to be permission, you know, for the school district to access the personal device. There was, there's been a couple of cases where there has been access to the personal device and there was a question of whether or not that was voluntary access. So the, this case law right now is unfolding before our eyes because we are at a point in history with the technology where it is, the question is if it's accessing a school network, does that mean that we are, that person is using a school resource? So again, what you've seen in the policy update here, Tom, is reflecting some of the legislative changes that have happened attempting to respond to this. So I wish I could say yes or no every time, but I would say that there are a number of different factors. In general, what I would suggest is that there would need to be, at this point, there would need to be permission, you know, to be able to access, lawful permission. But again, this is unfolding before eyes. I think we're going to see some ebbs and flows with this approach outside of policy, but more so in case law.
And, whoops, sorry, 1J.
What policy? Same, 524.2.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. District own. Non-district own equipment can be used to access school or district data networks and file, oh, sorry. So I was going to ask whether smartphones can use the Wi-Fi, but that's the, would that be considered the data network?
Yes, it would.
So no non-district owned equipment, so smartphones cannot use Wi-Fi at the school?
Could you share with me which number, which letter?
That's our 1J.
Yes, so there are two pieces there. We provide two different networks within the school. We provide a password protected network that all of our school-owned devices are automatically coded to access. We also offer a guest network for that, that your phone, my phone, whatever, are able to access the guest network because it is specific for non-school district owned devices. It would not be appropriate for a student to access with their personal device the password protected network.
Right.
So there is a difference. And in this case, that particular part is talking about the password protected network and file servers.
All right, you know, is the guest network ever mentioned in any policy?
It is not because that, when we try to write that policy, we try to write it globally right now, the guest network is how we access it. A year from now or two years from now, there could be something a little bit different. So we do not reference the password protected or guest network because when we look at this particular piece, we're specifically talking about accessing those things that are password protected by the district. I understand what you're saying. We'll take a look at it to see if we can clean that up a little bit. This is an example of where this is the latest revision from MSBA and it does not include that. And every school district has a guest network.
Yeah.
Right? So it's, I think it's one of those parts where we are still trying to catch up in policy with what the practice is. But I appreciate the feedback. We will take a look at it and see if there's a way that we can carefully delineate that. We'll use our students to help us with that part as well.
All right, if I can keep going?
Jeff, did you have a comment specifically about the guest access?
Yeah, well, so the guest network would be, it would be, I guess it depends on your definition of security. So the guest network is a public network and just like any other public network, I would always advise caution, you know, in terms of utilizing a guest network. We don't have a ton of specialized security precautions on the guest network like we do on the password protected network, but there's a clear delineation between the two. So getting on our guest network is probably no different than getting on McDonald's, you know, Wi-Fi network. It's intended to provide what does protect it, does not allow you to use things like district printers, it does not allow you to access district file servers. So if I am on the guest network and I tried, we don't even use file servers like that anymore for kids. In the old days, it wouldn't let you connect, you know, to the file server. There's also another layer of filtering protection on the guest network. So there are certain sites on the guest network that from time to time we get complaints from families saying, "Well, how come I can't use Instagram on your, you know, public network?" Well, that's part of the item that is prohibited for a number of reasons, including bandwidth so that when we have a lot of people in one place, we don't have a bunch of people uploading photos and slowing the network down for others. We're not providing a Cadillac guest network, but we are providing reasonable access. And so those would be just some of the differences between the guest network and the password protected network.
What does the guest network cover? What areas? Is this pretty much in the school?
Oh, yes, very much so. It's, there are, this is an interesting building, so there are various spots within the building where there are some issues, but for the most part, the guest network does cover almost all buildings. We have a desire to see if we can get it at the football field, but we're not there quite yet.
Tom, you have other questions?
Yeah, so to Amy's point, in part four of the 240, or the place we were just at, where it talks about parents' responsibility.
So 524.2?
Yeah.
And then what spot, what point are you?
Number four. Number four, parents' responsibility.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, I. Well, I, you know, I appreciate the, the intent, I don't know that it's the school's place to tell parents how they should, what they should do regarding internet use at home, other than, there's a second sentence in that part where parents are responsible for monitoring students' use on school district or school-related equipment. I wonder if, if that could be reworded, perhaps?
So, I think that you hit on it, Tom, and the fact that the intent of that new MSBA recommended section is to make it very clear that, you know, when a student device is outside of the school district, that it is not something that the school district can continue to completely supervise the entire time.
Right.
So, if you, I think that really the controlling part goes back to the top in purpose, talking about access to school district technology resources, and in the advent of allowing student devices to go home, which we have always had this kind of approach when we've talked with families about our school district devices going home, this is the MSBA policy putting that into practice, and it really is, I almost consider it more of a, a good-faith notification, right? In the fact that because it's a school district-issue device, does not mean that everywhere you go, do the school district's protocols, security protocols, go into play. And so, we've tried a number of different things over the years with that here. This is the MSBA recommended addition to the policy, really essentially ensuring that parents know that just because it's a school-issue device does not mean that when they're at home, that they are necessarily under the same exact security protocols, same web access limitations as they might be here at school. So, I think the intent of that, Tom, we could certainly try to take a look at how we might modify that a bit. I would want to talk with the MSBA folks, because that was a specific addition that they made, that we would want to ensure that we are in alignment with what their legal team says.
Yeah, no, I certainly understand that, but that first sentence where it talks about things like television, telephones, radio, movies, and other media, that is not school-related to have that part included in there, seems like a little bit of Big Brother or some or something.
Yeah, and I think their intent there, as I look at it, is to really try to help people understand that this is another source, note, to give some examples.
Right, yeah, no, right.
We can certainly take a look at, I would just, what I really want to do is make sure that we talk to the School Boards Association about the rationale, because this was very intentional language of how they suggested it. And the one piece that I need to just to double-check is that that may be because there were so many changes this year made based upon legislation, and part, this is a unique one, because this is not just about state statute, this policy also puts us in compliance with the Children's Online Privacy Act, COPA, which is required for us to be able in alignment with in order to gain access to E-rate funds, which gives us some reduction on some of our internet service and allows us to purchase some network equipment at a reduced cost through a federal government program. So, unlike a number of the others that we were talking about, this one is more than just the state legislature, this could also be an update to the Children's Internet Protection Act.
All right.
But we will check.
Okay.
You've asked the question, and we will check on it.
And then, if we could go to 532, use of peace officers, peace teams. It talks about removing students, IP students, from school grounds, and it doesn't say, I mean, my impression is that you take the kids, you put them out on the street, and they're on their own, and, I mean, they're vulnerable to begin with, and they're, it's, it's not like spelled out what happens to them when you remove them from the grounds. And then, can they just walk back in? Or, it, there's, it talks about in, a deep parental notification where there, you make a reasonable effort to contact a parent, but I can't imagine you're going to take a kid and just take him off school grounds and, and leave them there, but yet, the, the policy seems vague on what becomes them and who's responsible, or-
Tom, could you share the part where you initially should talk about, about the leaving school grounds, the section part where you're talking about that?
Um, let's see. B, yeah.
B, okay, yeah. 4B?
Yep, 4B, yeah.
So, Tom, I think that, in my review of this, again, this is Minnesota School Boards Association recommended language, and this has not changed, there's only one change in this policy which has to do with reporting components.
Right.
They're requiring that we report differently, that was a change in the legislative. So, in this case, I would argue that it is inherent that we would not take a student off school grounds and leave them there. I think that we're talking about if they were removed from school grounds for the purposes of attending a, possibly going to a hospital, or potentially could be a law enforcement situation. So, I, I understand what you're saying, I don't think that, I, I think this is where I use the reasonable person, you know, theory that the reasonable person, you know, would say that of course we're not going to take a student and leave them somewhere three blocks off of campus, that wouldn't be the way it would work. There are very specific protocols that our special education team goes through in terms of making sure that students are in the right place, number one, for their own safety and for the safety of others around them. So, I, I would argue that it's inherent in the policy that we have a, we have a responsibility to take care of that student, whether that student can still be on school grounds or not, and this is in a very unique set of circumstances that frankly here happens very infrequently. If that was the case, then we would, of course, either send someone, one of our staff members with them, and it's not just about reasonable efforts to contact, we have very good ways to contact the parents, it's rare that we're not able to contact a parent, and most parents have given us additional people to contact should there be an issue. So, I appreciate what you're saying, I, I don't personally have a concern with it, but it's something we can certainly ask the question if it's concerning to you.
Well, it's, because you do talk about parental notification as a specific thing, sort of like after it's happened, and since these are policies, I'm sure we have these things in place, or we think we do, or whatever, and we're good people, we would do this, but if it has any kind of consequences or whatever, do these need to actually be spelled out so that you don't just take the kid, or, or, you know, we think, oh, somebody's come to get them, or, or they took them somewhere, I don't know, maybe that's, maybe that's too much, or maybe just follow up on it.
So, we can ask that question, Tom, because this is, you know, this is, the policy language has been recommended for some time, and has been vetted and reviewed by their legal team, but it, it's a fair question to make sure that something is spelled out appropriately. We can certainly ask the question, and when we bring it back for the next time, we can give additional feedback.
Great. And then, I think, just one more, maybe two, sorry for all these-
No, that's fine, that's fine.
That's the purpose of the first reading.
That's why we're here.
In 534, unpaid meal charges.
Yep.
On 4B, the school district may post the policy on the district's website, is that may, and that it's allowed, or it's not allowed, or it's optional, or should that be, we shall post it? I know it's a kind of a nitpicky thing, but-
We, we do post it, so-
Okay, then maybe we should-
Shall.
Shall, or something.
Yep, we can make that change.
And then, finally, policy 603, curriculum development, thank you, or for everybody who did it, but the discussion about dyslexia and the procedures for screening on that.
Can you tell me the number, Tom?
Uh, that number, yeah.
That's got it, yep.
Yeah. And then, G, I guess I'm not sure what that means, that, that school is free and we need to tell people that school is free up until the age of 21?
Yes, so there are some students who in certain circumstances qualify for time in our school beyond what would be considered the traditional exit from the school. So, in this case, there's a number of students, for example, at our area learning center, you know, who go beyond the age of 18, and this is, this is underlying, so this is new language from the Minnesota Legislature requiring that people know that they have the opportunity to continue on, that it's intended to avoid dropout, which we already do that, obviously, because we have a very successful area learning center program. Again, when we're looking at some of these policy changes, we may have had a local practice, which in this case we do, that has existed for some time, where we are simply codifying it and putting it into the policy language based upon the, because apparently some places, they have not told them that they are eligible to stay.
All right, got that. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
I love it, that's great.
Yeah, no, this is it.
Good questions.
Anyone else?
Okay, I do have a couple, so I'll be brief, but, 510, the first policy, school activities. It's discussing an annual evaluation of school activity programs presented to the school board. What, how extensive is that? What is that going to entail? Looks like they're asking for an annual evaluation of school activity programs, which, as we know, in our district are quite a few. What type of effort would that be, and?
Which number are you talking about?
I'm sorry, policy 510?
Yep, got it.
E.
E. Yes. So, I would argue-
I'm assuming that's new because it's underlined.
It is.
Okay.
And so, what I would argue is that we are conducting an annual evaluation, I think you're also getting that three times a year, right, from Director Activities to Olson just shared.
Okay.
So, I would say that when you look at that approach, that is the minimal piece, but you're really getting three different evaluations from Mr. Olson each year after each season.
Sure, okay, I just wondered how extensive of reporting and review they were actually asking for, so it doesn't, obviously, we're already doing it, so that's good, I was hoping it wasn't some onerous effort that we now had to undergo. My other question on the policy 535, service animals-
Yes.
-in schools. So, yeah, I, I can see how this is something that was, needed to be written, and thanks to the committee and MSBA for their work on it. Under liability, it's owner of a service animal responsible for any harm or injury, would there not be that same situation for a non-service animal? So, if a non-service animal were to cause any harm or injury to an individual property damage, so, I guess my question is, wondering why they would not have also mentioned non-service animals under liability?
Yeah, great question. So, the re, I, I believe, Julie, the reason that this is setting, so, if I am a person who uses a service animal to assist me as an accommodation for a disability that I have, there's some very specific, there's some very specific parameters, in fact, there's an application that has to happen, because you aren't able just to say, I need a service animal to help me through X, Y, and Z.
Right.
You have to provide some documentation, there's an application that you have to fill out, and so, those service animals can be with a person the entirety that they're at school. So, it requires a little bit of a different set of circumstances, and they're talking specifically in this case, they're putting a box around service animals. So, it is a policy specifically addressing service animals, not addressing non-service animals, so that's why they're not putting that in this policy.
Well, the only reason I ask is because the previous paragraph discusses non-service animals, or, there's two, they discuss non-service animals for students and employees, so they are addressing non-service animals within the policy, so that's why I was just interested as to why, under the liability piece, they didn't reference non-service animals.
Yeah, that's a good question, but we'll find that out.
Okay.
This one is new.
Yeah, I know, I know it's new, and so that's why I was just curious.
And we, we actually have had a lot of debate on this one, really examining-
Well, it's, it's difficult to, to, again, you know, really take care of all the, the different aspects of, of, you know, a service and a non-service animal in, in the building, so, so that's my other question.
Yes, thank you, you know, that's, that's a good piece, and we'll make sure that we check in on that.
Great. So, any other questions on policy? All right, so, if four members, again, we thank you to Dr. Hillman and Anita, who will be back in touch with MSBA to clarify some of those questions, and if four members are reviewing it prior to, actually, our next board meeting will be in January, so, we would take action on these policies at that time. And again, thanks to the policy committee, because this is, this is a really important effort, but it's, there's a heavy lift to, to being on the policy committee, so we appreciate the people who are serving on that.
And especially as we get the cycle rolling, right?
Right.
And as we start to, every four years, we will, it's important we have these questions now, because this is some of the most important work of the board, the governance work, to make sure that we're asking, because these are, this is your directive to us of how to handle these circumstances, so we, we not only welcome the questions, we urge you to share them with us, because we want to make sure we get it right.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, that does conclude our items for discussion and report, so we can now move on to the consent agenda. There were just a couple of personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent agenda, as well as a gift, some gift agreements. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent that was moved by Ellen? Is there a second, second by Amy? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we will move on now to items for individual action, and we have a few, as well as the addition of the special P C A, so, we will work through those. The first item for individual action is the certified final 2019 payable 2020 tax levy. So, is there a motion to certify the county auditors, the 2019 payable 2020 final certified levy limitation and certification report in the amount of $19,985,995.93, a figure that we know Val has memorized? Is there a motion? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Along that side, same line, then, we will move to the general, revised general fund budget, so is there a motion to approve the revised 2019-20 general fund budget of revenues of $56,972,999, and expenditures of $57,588,443? Is there a motion to approve the revised? Okay, moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or comments? And we have a motion to approve the revised general fund budget, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now will move on to approval of policies 300 series, as you recall, we had the first reading at our last meeting, so is there a motion to approve the changes to the 300-series policies as presented? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Again, questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the 300-series policies, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the additional items, item for individual actions, so, is there a motion to add an assistant P C A at Greenville Park Elementary at a cost not to exceed, for the balance of the 2019-20 school year, not to exceed $17,155? Moving by Amy, is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, that does take care of our items for information, we can move down on now to items for information, we have construction update number 18, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, so you'll see that we have had some exciting items here, and as I talk, Mr. Dibbick is going to go to the computer, because we've got some pretty cool video footage from the latest drone flyover to- from the latest drone flyover to show you. So, a really big week at Greenville Park, the new Greenville Park School last week. If you noticed, the precast concrete panels were erected. It actually looks like a building. The gym is there. The steel studs are going up. You really see a lot of progress in a very short amount of time. Now, that gymnasium piece is really important because not only do you start to see the building, but it is also now allowing, it will very soon, once the roofing is complete, will be allowing the contractors to store equipment inside, which is really important for the winter build. So, these are literally, we just got these flyovers this afternoon. I think they were from last week. Josh Cooper from Knutson provided them. So, Mr. Dipick, would you go ahead and queue up? And I know we're not, we're not going to get to focus the camera over there, Bruce, and that's okay for right now, so go ahead and...
We can edit it.
I feel like there should be some dramatic music.
I know.
We didn't have time to edit it before.
Good thing they didn't try to do it today because it would be...
Yes, this clearly was before today.
Where's the person flying the drone?
In an undisclosed location. The camera quality is what just blows me away, you know, how detailed and how clear it is.
I never think I've seen a crane inside a building.
I'm wondering how that's coming out.
Yes. I'm guessing another crane to get the crane out. So, I think you can see at Greenville Park, just the tremendous amount of work that has just taken place in this fairly, there was a lot of effort to get to this point, obviously, but some really positive things. Bruce, are there, there's flyovers of Bridgewater and Sibley too? Is that, why don't you go ahead and move to that next one? I think that we've seen the angle of that several times. Everybody okay with that? I'm not sure how long they are, so...
This one is...
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and cut it now, Bruce. Everybody comfortable with that?
No, absolutely.
And to where?
Let's do the Sibley one next. Let's see how long that's a minute forty eight, so we can... So, I heard today that the Sibley project is slightly ahead of schedule right now, which is awesome to hear. They were able to pour more, the concrete footings were poured last week on Thursday and Friday. Of course, we'd already sent the construction update out, but really some great progress.
I was just in marvel at how they're able to work around the snow. Because if you watch the time lapse cameras, Sibley had so much snow on that state.
Yes. And the one thing that's interesting about Sibley, you'll see, there's some, there's some sand that when they were doing the excavation, so for example, if you look on the, right near the building on the right-hand side, there, there's the snow. And then right to the right of that, there's something that looks like snow if there hadn't been snow on the ground. That's actually sand that was pulled out during the excavation process. So, clearly, at some point, when a parking lot was redone, there was an additional layer of sand put down to help with drainage and things like that. Is that enough for Sibley? People could do that? Okay, let's go on to Bridgewater then. Yes.
It does. Except for the snow.
Yes, except for the snow. But what I'm, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I think what we've all commented is it looks like it's the original structure.
And, you know, they're now in that office, they've been in that office for a full week. There are still some, you know, minor things that they're tweaking and working on. And, you know, again, I've had a, just to review, the purpose of why we did this was to control entry into the building. I've had, I have had a couple of comments from people who I don't think quite understood that that was what we were trying to secure, is that secure entrance. Because once we secure the entrance, we can't allow all the parents in at the end of the day like they used to be. And so, I really thank parents for their flexibility and patience, and Principal Antoine has done a really masterful job of helping people understand what the new normal is. And so, we certainly want to share with parents, it's not that we were looking to get them out, but we, as you know, we were really responding to a substantial amount of parent feedback about wanting to make sure that there was greater secure access at that facility because once people got in, they could basically be anywhere pretty quickly. So, we've had a lot of positive feedback, as you said, like it's been there the whole time. So, that's our, the flyover is worth several million words, right? So, that's our construction update.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Enrollment reports.
Yes, so you'll see the latest enrollment report with the numbers for December. One thing I want to call your attention to is the second page of the document. For those of you who have been looking at this document for several years, this aligns with what Val was talking before about seeing a slight decrease in our elementary population. But what you'll notice is we have some pretty awesome class sizes. So, that's something we've been, you know, watching for years, and as we've had ebbs and flows, you'll notice that our class sizes are, you know, really within a range where I think that we all would prefer them to be. Now, of course, that comes at the cost of having some lesser number of elementary students rather than an increase in staffing. And in fact, you'll notice at Greenville Park, we do have two grade levels that are in three sections. Because again, the numbers there did not support four sections. It's kind of decisions, again, as we talked earlier, the kind of difficult decision that we make to be good stewards of our dollars and to make sure that we can sustain our funding for as long as possible. So, we show you this every month, I'll call attention to that specifically this month.
Any other questions on enrollment? Okay, thank you. Late start update.
Yes, just want to give a very brief update that, you know, one week from tonight, we will have a two-hour work session starting at 5:00 PM. I just want to provide you updates that, as you know, we've continued to gather feedback on the concept plan that we've shared in terms of the start times and end times. We had, as you know, two parent sessions that we had 140 people attend between the two. We just closed a parent feedback opportunity for those people who could not attend. Of course, if you attended, you could still fill out the form. There was no way for us to say, oh, you came, we can't fill, you know, fill it out, so we wanted as much feedback. I closed that survey last night, 298 additional responses that we will be providing for you next week. We added, just last night, we sent out an additional staff survey while we had face-to-face meetings, or will, at the end of this week, we'll have had face-to-face feedback meetings in every single building. We wanted to provide another opportunity for staff to provide feedback, again, on the same four questions. And so, that is happening right now. As of this morning, there are already 40 additional responses there. And then, working with the district youth council, as you remember, they held a session where they had about 30 students come. There were some questions, could we provide an opportunity for students to provide additional feedback? You saw three of our DYC folks here, Jack Rizzo, Alice Zhang, and Kaya Schomburg, who are all integral in the, the mental health, well, there's the two co-chairs, and then Kaya chairs the student mental health committee. They've reviewed the survey that we're going to send out tomorrow. Again, replication of what we had asked students in the meeting that they attended. They do have one additional question. We did ask students at that meeting to say, while there's a pathway to potentially having both a later school start time and flex, if you had to choose, what would you choose? Because we think that's a question we asked in person, we want to ask that question as well. So, we're preparing those things. As we said, Activities Director Joel Olson will be here to add, to discuss numerous challenges that, you know, we have known about for some time, but continue to arise around how would athletics plan to a later school start? We also will have Benjamin Bus here to talk about what are, are the transportation concerns? They are, I think, pretty serious transportation concerns. So, we are working to provide, get that information ready for you, and we look forward to a robust discussion. I do have news hot off the press that just this evening, Farmington Public School has voted to move to a later school start time beginning next year. Now, their process was a couple of months ahead of ours. They had started theirs really in June, or they, they were starting what we had started in the fall and June. And so, they did vote to go that way. So, again, we're seeing some other school districts around us who have been, who have voted to go with this. Now, again, as we know, when we go to the north, one of the main differences is that the population density of those school districts, they're far more dense in terms of population than we are. So, that's a hard thing, I think, for sometimes people who are talking about the transportation, well, they've done it in Wisehead, or they've done it in Endine, and now they're doing it in Farmington. That's where just our transportation piece is just a little bit different. But I appreciate the opportunity to put these things together, and we look forward to a robust conversation next Monday.
Do you know what time it is?
I do not, I don't have that in front of me.
I would think it'll come through in our MSBA script in a day or so. Okay. Excellent. Okay, any other question, or any questions on late start update?
Yeah, the purpose tonight was just to give you an update on where we're at with some of those things to prepare for that conversation for next week.
It's going to be an excellent work session. So, just a reminder, the MSBA Board Member Recognition Luncheon, where we're going to honor Board Member Noel Stratton, those 40 years of service on the board. So, I know, thank you to Board Members who RSVP'd their attendance. We'll have a nice representation of the board, so we're, and Dr. Hillman as well. So, it'll be a great day to celebrate Noel's service to the district. Just as a heads up, we're looking at needing a special school board meeting, again, as we work through the bond projects and the timing of the award bids, which we know is really critical in terms of keeping the projects on schedule around also, and working that around board meetings. So, in March, we typically only have one board meeting because of spring break. So, we are looking at needing a special school board meeting on Monday, March 30th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. And we're just teeing that up for you now. Again, we do only need quorum for something like that, but we have been fortunate when we've had those special school board meetings, everyone has freed their schedule in order to approve those bids. These bids would be for the Longfellow renovations, so moving right along. Future meetings then, as we mentioned, Monday, December 16th, which is a week from today, at 5:00 PM, we will do the board work session around the late start for secondary students. And at, again, 5:00 PM in the Northfield High School Media Center. Board meetings then, in January, we're already looking at the 2020 calendar year. January, Monday, January 13th will be our first meeting of the new year. Organizational board meeting will begin, followed by the regular school board meeting. And then, Monday, January 27th, both of those meetings at 7:00 PM in the Northfield High School Media Center. So, with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn, and that is moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.